The October regular school board meetings for Solon County School District. It is the mission of the Solon County School District to get each and every student rigorous and involved in experiences and analyzing students through exceptional teaching. Welcome, everyone. We've got a full house here tonight. Christian, I'll call it all.
I can. Jeff has got it. Well, here, Alaska.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Putin is absent, but my understanding is he's on his way and will make nobody erupt.
Thank you very much. Again, thanks, everyone, for making the trip here tonight. And that, thanks for making the time to come cover the board. We appreciate the coverage we get lovely. David's celebration of achievements. Oh, actually, because I'm assuming we don't have anybody registered to speak.
Um, we, we do not, but I'm going to double check since it's a big crowd.
Okay. Davis, celebration of achievements.
Yeah, we just, Zach just confirmed that our, our girls and boys cross country teams are WAMAC champs. They won the meet tonight. They're WAMAC champs. And as we, you already know, our football team won the district again, district champs. I'm going to add to the eighth grade girls cross country team are WAMAC champs. Seventh grade girls were runner up, so add that in too. So all sports have been, continue to be very successful.
Administering a report, strategic plan, social emotional, mental health and post-secondary.
Hey, guys. Good to be back. I've had class every Thursday, so.
Actually, this week.
Good to see you. I did not, I had a meeting or something yesterday over the last couple of days. I just wanted to highlight some of the things that we are currently doing in our pandemic schedule, specific to two items that we've got at the high school. So this first document that you see, this is kind of a draft. You haven't seen this yet, but this is district, kind of big picture, strategic planning goals. And what I'm going to just share with you briefly ties into that second one where all students will increase their sense of belonging and well-being socially and emotionally. And part of that process that we have at the high school is connected to two different things. And we're, we're kind of merging them right now. And so the social emotional learning support that I know you've heard our counselors kind of share some of the things that we've been doing and working through and learning both as a staff and our students as well. But we're tying some of that into our, our ICAP. And I know many of you know what's, what the ICAP acronym stands for. But if you don't, it's individual career and academic planning. So you've got two documents underneath that top page. And really, just wanted to point out a couple of things so you kind of have a sense of what it is that we're currently executing, specific to House File 2392, which is the ICAP requirements that came out in 2016 in the Department of Education. So if you flip that page to page two, if you look at, there's, there's essentially five components to the ICAP. The essential components are self-understanding, career information, career exploration, post-secondary exploration, and career and post-secondary decision-making. The first one is self-understanding, right? And we all know how important it is to know who you are as an individual, as a person. And because of that piece that we currently have with ICAP, we're really tying in some of the social emotional learning that we're doing as well. So if you look at the second handouts, this is kind of big picture what we've been doing. Historically, the last couple of years, we've actually had half-days, we've had time spent in seminar where kids will move to different locations. But because of our mitigation, we're not doing some of that stuff. So everything's happening with those 15 students in their, their own space during seminar. And so the first few weeks of the semester, we had planned throughout the summer to do something different with ICAP, specific to each grade level, ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th. But we kind of decided to take a step back and think, think about our teachers, think about our kids, like not adding another thing and more stuff. So we, we wanted to just push something out that was created. And so Mr. Thompson, I know, Coach Miller has also been a part of creating some of these kind of whole group lessons for kids. And we're tying it in to the career and academic planning. And it all kind of ties into the self-awareness piece. So if you turn to page two of the big picture ICAP lessons, you'll see it just highlighted the self-awareness. And so we're tying that piece in to the self-understanding piece of ICAP, trying to get kids to really understand who they are as a person, what their strengths are, how that could play into classes they choose, job shadows they might end up choosing, all of, all of that information. So this all came from Mr. Thompson's work. And then he and I know Kevin, throughout the course of the week, will talk and meet a little bit. And then we push out these lessons to all of our teachers. And they implement those lessons on Monday. This would be considered kind of that tier-one core instruction around social emotional learning. And that's happening on Mondays. Now, we actually, this last week, since there was a little bit different schedule, we utilized our peer leaders to help teach this lesson around triggers and how we can identify emotions in any given situation. So that's kind of, in a nutshell, briefly, how we're kind of merging these together to continue to support students in that one, that one area right now. Our ICAP team continues to meet. We want to get back into more specific grade level tasks and learning targets so that we meet all five of those competencies that the state of Iowa has, has identified. So I will stop talking. Questions?
Questions to the board?
Remind me again, Zach, as the students go through this process year to year, how, how do we offer them or how do you adjust if they decide that they're kind of leaning in a different direction than maybe what they started at ninth grade?
Yeah, great question. And hopefully that's, that's what happens. We just, they shouldn't have. I mean, some of them really have a, a plan that they think is going to work, but every year is a little bit different for each student. We have these ICAP conferences that we started two years ago. And those are in January is usually when we host those. And it's really a dialogue between parents, students, and then that seminar teacher to kind of flush out where they're at and where they think they're going. Historically, we've kept all of this in an ICAP folder. We house in, in with our seminar. But because of, again, touching things, moving things, we're trying to move a lot of what they're doing to the, to the Google classroom, which we've got all set up for all, all grade levels. We've got things that we've already identified that we're going to do. We just haven't done them yet. But really, every year is that reflective dialogue around where we're at and where are we going. And that plays into what course selections look like too for the following year.
It looks like next week's lesson is on self-regulation.
So we are a week behind. So we just, we just finished lesson three. What are my triggers? Triggers for anxiety? That's kind of where you're at right now. So we're a week behind.
So I was just going to take the one that's funny and just, just ask for a stat. If, if I was a student that showed up next Monday, and I was a sophomore, what would, what would this look like to me as I showed up?
So right now, the lessons for ninth and 10th graders are the same. It'll be 15 to 20 minutes. The first couple, Mr. Thompson actually recorded himself. A little bit of a direct instruction piece that goes right to the seminar teachers. All kids are hearing the same message from Mr. Thompson. And then the kids will have some type of self-reflection component to that. So we've had Google forms that kids have filled out after hearing what he said. We had them watch some other videos and again, respond to what they think they saw and why they saw that. This last month, it was Wednesday, the way that we did it this last week, they actually had peer leaders in there acting out some different scenarios within, you know, the school setting that kids have had probably at some point, whether it was a positive or a negative. And then there were discussion questions that peer leaders or seminar teachers kind of helped facilitate to have discussion. And some of it was done in small groups, some of it was done whole group, just depended on the, the individual, about 20, 25 minutes for the most part. Kevin, I don't know if you want to speak to any of your experiences at all, because I know you've got a seminar this year for the first time.
Right. Um, I feel like it's been extremely beneficial. Both ways, I know we're very well, because they're easy to buy into the teacher's time to facilitate some of those discussions that are important. But I really feel there is a tremendous need, social and emotional aspect, just the mental health in general. And this is a great, great way for us to just bring some attention and awareness. The next thing that we're trying to teach is social, you know, this awareness, this emotional intelligence. Why do I feel a certain way? Okay. And then how do I respond in accordance with this emotion and feeling? So those are the things that we're really trying to equip our students with, to give them the tools to go manage the various emotions. And we had a good discussion here just before I came over with regards to, you know, some of the things that we hope to implement in the next month or so. And some of that is rooted around knowing, you know, identifying their strengths and weaknesses, knowing who they are. I think those are some of the important components moving forward. Because a lot of our kids, obviously, need to have that understanding of, you know, who they are, what their strengths are, what their weaknesses are, and, and rooting in some of those patterns that they possess. So really just kind of doing an inventory, those strengths, weaknesses, those type of things. So it's been very beneficial for me as an educator, just to, to get a different side of, you know, some of the social, emotional needs that our kids need and sometimes lack. So I've had a great experience so far. So that's just kind of just.
With so many of our kids involved next, at this point, kind of this, integrating some of the extracurriculars, coaches getting involved with this, the sponsors for, like, music, music clubs, clubs get involved in this, or is this kind of?
No, this is directly academic day as it sits right now.
I could, I could see, you know, as you build it out, it could be a way, as you identify strengths and weaknesses, it could be like, oh, you, you, I think you should, you know, this would be a great way of, of working on this skill or, you know, having the sponsor and the coach, we're, we're trying to work them in different settings, so.
Yeah. So moving forward, our, our hope throughout the course of the next month, like Kevin says, is to continue doing this whole group, but then trying to move back into where we were thinking we were going to go with a little bit more individualized, for each student, specific to, to grade level and their needs, so.
Any other questions today? Thank you, Zach. Next up is Focus on Learning.
Yeah, so if you look at our strategic plan, you know, we have, on the right of this document, we have academic, social, emotional learning, post-secondary school improvement. This falls under academics. We've got the district goal of 95% of all students will be proficient reading, writing, math, and science. It's an initiative that we started in the 612 math department two years ago. And last year, our 612 math department started moving towards blended learning because they were going to pilot it for our district. As Josh spoke at the last board meeting, we had to accelerate that timeline up. And we've introduced blended learning to all K-12 teachers. Josh kind of spoke about what blended learning is. And I know one of the questions the board had was, what does it look like operational wise? And so I, we have two math teachers at the middle school that I'm going to let introduce themselves and kind of give you that information on what it looks like.
Hi, I'm Emily Fort. This is my second year teaching math here at Solon in eighth grade.
I'm Samantha Kaplan, fourth year in Solon, first year teaching eighth grade. And so we're just going to show you what blended learning has kind of looked like in our classroom this year. Yep. I can click the slides if you want. I have a lot of stuff.
For a second.
Yeah.
How's that?
Good.
Okay.
Maybe I have to click it again. I put animations on everything. I got a little excited.
Animations are good.
Um, so we're just going to talk about what does blended learning mean? So one of the things is the materials are presented online, but in a variety of formats. So it could be a video, it could be something to read, an activity. And it allows students to work at their own pace using different resources that we provide them. They have access to their peers and to teachers to support them. Students are able to take charge of their learning and start learning some time management skills. And we kind of provide them like the structure of what the week should look like, so they have the flexibility to, like, if I have a basketball game tonight, I'm not going to be able to get this done, so I can work on it tomorrow. They have a whole week to work. Students are able to self-assess their understanding. So as they're working through the materials, they kind of rate themselves on their understanding. And they have the opportunity to pick different activities based on how they feel they're doing. And one of the main reasons we kind of jumped into this this year is because we never know who's going to be in our classroom for a variety of reasons. So this provides students the ability to have the same instruction at home as they would if they were in the classroom. And we also were in this unique situation with how we grouped students that we were trying to find a way to still have our typical eighth grade class and an accelerated class. So how could we differentiate that instruction for our students based on their level of interest? So what does it look like in eighth grade? And this is like a snapshot of their Google classroom. And so here you can see the structure of how it's laid out for them. So I would provide them activities on Monday, but that doesn't mean they have to do them on Monday. And we try to have them all ready to go on Monday for the whole week. So if they get finished with Mondays, they can move on to Tuesday if they want. And we provide them, you go ahead and click a couple times. So it's broken up by days. And then we provide them different symbols so they know, well, I'm working on a lesson. So this probably has a video or a note sheet to go along with it. The backpack would be an activity. So here's the practice problems, whether it's an online activity or in-person. Maybe they're collaborating, collaborating with their peers, and that pack would just be the practice part of the class. And that just provides, again, another visual for students. And then at the end of the week, all of those activities from Monday through Friday, we moved down to a weekly section for them. So if they were on vacation for a week, they can just go back to that week and see, here's what we did in class that, or that week. And then like if they're studying for a test, all of those resources are still available for them. And so if you get into the actual activities themselves, you can see that there's, all the directions are written out. So here's the activity, we're doing part four, slope and Y intercept. All the directions are written, but then there's also a video often that has those same directions so that students will have an example of what they should be doing normally in the video. One of the problems is modeled up to the students, but they have it in written and video form. And then it's also separated based also if you're at school or you're in person at home. So if you're at school, where's the worksheet? Oh, it's probably on the counter. But if you're at home, here are some additional steps that you have to do in order to get them through this. Which is, yeah, what all my hair has said. Like I said, I got a little excited at this point, so you can keep going.
It's something pretty high standard for me next.
Um, so these are some examples of the task list. Did you hit it again? There we go. Um, so this is what a student would fill out at the start of each week. Um, the image on the left is a student that probably just started the week. So you can see that they both have all of the activities written out. At the start of each week, we make sure that, you know, everyone has all of the assignments written so that they know the order that they should be progressing things in. This is all on Google Classroom, but we, you know, make sure that everyone has it written down. And then as they complete assignments, they fill out the date that it was completed. It is the second column. And then the third column is their confidence level. So like we grade from a scale of one to four. If I'm really confident in the material, I'll give myself a four. If I was maybe a little iffy about it, maybe I'll give myself that two or three. And this is super valuable for students when it comes to time to practice for assessments because they're able to go back, see what activities they maybe didn't understand so well the first time, and review that material on their own. And then the final column is a stamp. That stamp will be something that either Emily or I give the students once they have finished the assignment. We check it for completion, but also for accuracy, and are able to give them some feedback at that time based on their understanding. And so again, that one on the left, probably at the start of the week, you can see that they're not totally finished. The one at the end, they have all their stamps probably being. And I think that confidence level is helpful for us too, when we come to check their work. And we can see they had all, everything right, but maybe they still put down that they were unconfident. Not confident, not confident. So we can have that conversation about building that self-esteem around math. Or maybe they put themselves at a four and all of their problems were wrong. So that kind of gives us some insight into how the student thinks they're doing. These are just, you can click this a couple of times. These are some types of activities that a student might be doing throughout the week. So some of them are online. I think there's one more. So like some of them, we use Khan Academy. We have a site, Public Forum. Those are kind of your typical math practice problems. But all of the information is collected in a online database, so we can see how they're doing. And we've used Desmos, which is an online format that is a little more interactive for the student. It's like a math simulation, they're kind of discovering the math as they go. And the one in the far corner is like, the bottom left corner, sorry, is a note sheet that would accompany the videos that we're creating. And we kind of started doing some of this a little bit last year. That was one thing I noticed, they watched the video, but if I didn't provide them something to do while they're watching the video, it's just kind of lost in space. So if they have to write down some key, key concepts from the video or do an example, then that's one of the things on their activity list. We would check the note sheet from the video and we can see, well, we copied this example down around, so we're probably not sure how to do this concept. And so it just gives them something to do while they're learning. And then this is another activity where they would be able to have some choice in what they're doing. We talked a lot about the pace. They have a whole week to kind of figure out their pace and how they want to work through. So we're trying to give students the opportunity to assess how they feel they're doing and have some choice in what they're learning. So this maybe would be like at the end of the week, we've been practicing how to find slope. They can determine, well, this week, finding slope has been really easy for me. I need a challenge. So I would pick the level three activity. And then they have the directions. Where would I find this? How do I do it? Again, with the how do I do it, there's written directions, and then there's a video direction. So same thing that is written, but then there's an example of the problem when the first problem is done. So they have a model. Or maybe finding slope was really hard for them this week, so they would want to choose level one. So in addition to those online resources, we also have some anchor charts in the line. You hear anchor charts a lot with blended charts. But it works really well in the math classroom too, especially for the big ideas that they're kind of carrying like them over a unit. So here are two examples of anchor charts for, you know, how do I find the Y intercept? How do I find slope? Students were able to watch Emily create these on videos, and they actually had many versions of the anchor charts themselves that they filled out while watching that video. But then these are constantly hanging in the room. So no matter what activity they're working on, students are able to have these examples and these notes right in front of them. And they additionally watch someone else fill out the note sheet they filled out themselves. So it's a lot of review just to make sure they really understood the material. I mean, just some pictures of what the blended learning actually looks like in the classroom. There's a lot of different ways that students are learning. The photo on the far right is two students working together. So you can see they're probably close to the same activity, close to being at the same pace. So they have their notebooks out, they have their technology out, they're working together. You also see on the far side of that, Emily conferencing with a student. So it was, hey, I have a check, I think I'm done. Maybe keep going over some things. Maybe that student just had a question about the material. But either way, we are able to walk around as teachers and address those problems on an individual basis. And students are also able to work individually. So the student in the middle, she's watching a video, she's taking notes. She can pause that video, she can rewind it, she can watch it 100 times if she wants. That resource is always there. And she's able to go through that at her own pace. So kind of the most powerful part, I think, of this is it creates us as teachers for the entire class period to have those individual conversations with students. In a traditional setting, I would just be up at the front of the room for 10 to 15 minutes. And so now I only have 15 minutes to work, and I might get to 10 or 12 minutes. And so we're able to have those really personalized conversations. And I think it also just gives students more opportunity to ask questions. Again, if you think of a traditional classroom, it's the same two or three kids always raising their hands. You don't necessarily get to hear it from every student. And one way that, to make it not as obvious, but also so students can keep working, is instead of like raising their hand if they need help, they just put a sticky note on the table. And so on these sticky notes, we just chat like whoever needs help. And one thing that's sort of unfortunate is if we could not have a pandemic right now, we would love to be able to pull a small group of students that are all struggling with the same topic. So we wouldn't have to have maybe five individual conversations that are all the same. We could just pull that small group. Hopefully, in the near future, sometime, we could do that. But for right now, it's just been a one-on-one topic. Kind of some overall thoughts. It really is empowering students to take some ownership of their learning. And it provides them the flexibility in their learning, so the pace in which they're moving, they get to determine that. And we're still providing the structure. It's kind of a weekly basis. Everything needs to be done by the following Monday. And then there's a new group of activities for them to do. And but it also provides choice with those leveled activities. It provides us more time to conference with students, answer their questions. And then it's really teaching them how to kind of advocate for themselves as a learner. Whether that be like, I have a question, I need help, so I need to put a sticky note up, or I can't find this worksheet, where do I go? Really giving them that, again, ownership to kind of take charge, which has been, I think, really beneficial for them because, especially in math, the higher you get up in math, we don't all use every single contest in our daily lives. But they're going to need to know how to start advocating for themselves. Especially when faced with dissonance in the math classroom or just in, you know, life. Figuring out how to critically think, how to problem solve, how to use all of the resources available, even if that's not a teacher directly, is, again, just beneficial. Not that you don't have to click anymore. What questions do we have?
How much more time do you think this takes though? It just seems like a lot of prep for you guys. It's great for the students, but how much more is it?
It's a lot of prep. I'm not going to lie, it is. But like moving forward, then every, you kind of have everything ready to go. So I think in the long run, if you're going to be doing this for a while, it definitely outweighs the time it takes to get it going. And this is, again, I don't think you necessarily have to start here. We kind of just jumped in. Mostly because we still wanted to provide that accelerated class for our math students. And this would be, I would say, like a full scale. We're doing blended learning. But you, you could do like two days a week where you're just providing them those like choice boards. That would be a smaller scale version, but it is a lot of prep.
You can see, I mean, great job, you know, pioneering this for the district. And we had purposely chose the math department to pioneer this. They're a year ahead of everyone else. And, but you can see how instrumental it is. Like you had stated earlier, if we have a group of students that have to stay home for 14 days, they can really say, you've got everything right there for them. They've got video, they've got their assignments. They can really stay connected to the classroom through Google Classroom, to this blended learning. Snow day, they can just keep going camping. But what they, exactly, exactly what they want to do on a snow day. Yeah, so.
Hey, something's going to happen.
Ah, well, yeah. And, and again, you've given us a great vision for how we foresee science, social studies, and, you know, our other content areas in the next two to three years.
Other questions?
Yes, I just have a question about the pace thing. So, I mean, obviously, the benefit of you being able to spend more one-on-one time is terrific. And, and you're right that the prep obviously is much heavier, but now you've got it built. But do you find yourself spending time with the overachiever who by Tuesday basically has got all the base filled out? Or the reverse, the professor there that Friday you're like, well, jeez, you're only half done?
Um, yeah, he definitely has lots of like, roadblocks of how are we gonna do this? So, um, I think the biggest thing is just only maybe in a video week. Um, when I tried just a few things last year, I tried like having a full unit. And then it really was, people are at the end of the module and some people are still on lesson two. Um, so really, just having a video week has helped us a lot, and then, um,
It's really a limited, so the overachiever can't go on.
Can't go too far, yes. Yeah, and then I also have a few, um, more like challenging type things that are optional that we provide, that since they get done, they're still working on something that's more geared towards where their level of understanding is at, but not every student will be able to do that.
And so a student is home for two weeks and they need some help with things, do they just email you guys, or, I mean, how do you, can you video conference with them during class, or how do you solve that problem if they need some help when there's going to be more of them?
Sure, um, with the examples of this year, it's just been a lot of emailing back and forth if they have questions, or they're, they will share digitally their homework, or if it's an online, um, software that I can provide feedback, either written or like a voice memo. Um, I wouldn't be opposed like during my prep if they're free, doing the Zoom if they needed to, but it would be really hard to like Zoom in during class, just because it is so one-on-one with all the students. Like, we aren't actually providing instructions to the whole group, um, but so, yeah, it's been a lot of emailing so far. And I did, we, I zoomed with one student at the very start of the year, she was one of our first friends, knocked out. Um, gone for those ten days, and she did fine for the most part, it was like, hey, I have one question, and I seen you really fast. And I said, sure, which is another benefit of both of us being in the room, that one of us does have to leave and zoom another student, there is someone in the room with the kids. Um, but it was a five-minute conversation, we figured out where she moved on. Uh, and with all those other resources available, she had pretty much all of her work done when she came back, so it was fun. And because that was like week one too, like, it's been progressively getting better each week, because this is brand new for students as well. And so for her to be gone the first week would have probably been a lot. So it's a new way of learning math instruction and I'm happy with that.
So how does this work on the other end? So we talked about people who are pushing the boundaries and we got some additional to do to keep busy if they, if they get past where we want to go. What about kids who are struggling or have an IEP and there's, there's a differentiated educational goal, how are we handling that with this context?
Yeah, so that those activity lists that we make, um, we will like take off tasks for them, or within each task as they're working, we provide them like more filled-in notes for them, takeoff problems. Um, or like this week, I just noticed quite a few people were starting to get behind, so I just said, we're gonna take these two, they've got this week, they won't finish the next week. So, um, it's really just kind of seeing where everybody's at and accommodating them, so they're still understanding the material, but if it's taking them a long time to get through these lessons, I'm worried.
That wasn't true, I, I know, back in the day, when my boys were going through, it was a lot of co-teaching, it went on frequently in math classes with, uh, Mr. Thompson and Mr. Jevica that would pop in and kind of help, help out with the students that were through those classes, I don't know if, if we still do that as much or not.
Yeah, during my first period, uh, Mr. Jevica.
There's, thinking about how that feeds them, is it, is that just going in that same kind of role, which is just kind of popping around the different students and, and doing the same sort of thing you are with more focused on the students that are?
Sure, yeah.
I guess the other question I had is, uh, as we, as we think about the standard assessment, we're, we're trying to stay on common core, the outcore and the books are that. How, how does this align to that in terms of, does it align better, to make it easier to make sure we're hitting those benchmarks as we move along, or or what do you think in terms of that, is it easier, harder to make sure we're hitting all those, those not-faceted people?
Uh, I don't know if it really actually makes it easier or harder, I think it's kind of the same, um. It has, especially this year, like, again, that weak timeframe is really helpful, because we want to be able to still say, okay, the assessment is this day for everybody. So, um, the content doesn't change, the content is still all aligned to those standards. Um, I will say, like, for those students who are further behind, it gets a little bit harder, because if they're really far behind when that test comes, now, they haven't, in the past, they maybe were able to still sit in the room and hear the lesson, but not do any of the work, because they're behind in their work, but at least they were hearing the lesson. Um, and in this case, the work sometimes is watch the video lesson, so if they haven't done that yet before the test, they're gonna have a hard time. Um, so that's a challenge, we just had a research that was last week. Um, some of that is accommodating, you need to make sure like, okay, yes, we need you to do this all at some point, but the first thing you need to do is make sure you're watching the lessons, because if you haven't seen the lesson, you're not gonna know how to do it.
Emily, I know it's a different group of kids this year, but, and it's a different year, but have you noticed any, um, acceleration achievement or, um, tighter achievement or?
Um, like I said, it's a different year, right?
And may not be able to judge it on this year.
Instruction, um, and it's a different group of students.
Yeah. Right.
Um, but I do think there's just been a lot more, like, learning how to problem solve for yourself. So, um, like you have the written directions and the video directions, but then we still get questions like, well, this part works, it works cheap. And so then, instead of me just showing them, it's like, well, let's find out, look at Google Classroom, what does it say? And so it says, hold on a second, and then I say, okay, well, there's the counter app. So it's, it's been a lot of learning for them.
Yes.
Um, not just math, which I think is really helpful, because the math classroom can be challenging for some students, it's not everyone's favorite. And, um, yes, we all use math in our lives, but we're not gonna all need to know how to solve a system of linear equations or the quadratic equation. But they are gonna have to be able to read directions and problem solve and talk to their neighbors, ask them a question, so, um, I do think students are getting more of those skills this year than they normally do. As far as math learning, it's really hard to, to compare. I will say I taught, so I taught all these kids in seventh grade math, and then moved up with them in eighth grade math. Um, and we took our sweet time in seventh grade math, we were very, very slow at getting through things. And so I do actually think that they've gotten more, like, actual math skills in a shorter amount of time in watching them even grow from their seventh grade, where it was a lot of hand-holding, eighth grade where, like you said, where is the counter, where is the one counter in the room?
Right.
Um, and having them just had to take those steps towards more independence, um, I think that's actually, they've come a very long way in just a few weeks from where they weren't in seventh grade.
That's great. Thank you for attending tonight, that was good, that was a good one. I did a good vision, yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Tim will make note that Dan arrived at six oh six PM for the meeting as well, welcome back.
Uh, next up, we have board media update.
I know, I'm the one on the committee. We assign you all the things.
I do have a couple things, yeah. And Tim, I want to talk a little bit about the council meeting with the community center or not, but, um, the city council did meet, um, about a little over a week ago, and talk about the future of the community center in their eyes, and Tim was gracious enough to attend, and I think he did a good job answering a lot of maybe questions that they had. Or as a, initially as a resident, but then he had to put the school board that on for a minute, right?
Yeah, I told him I was there only as a resident and that didn't stop him from asking questions, so. Yeah, I think it was a, it was a good, the city had a good conversation, they're trying to solve a challenging financial situation with making the community center work, and they're committed to having a good rep program for the community, and they're trying to figure out the best way to do that, and so, uh, they're gonna work through their ideas, I think, um, we've had some conversations with them about what that's gonna look like, so.
And, and really indirectly having not a lot to do with that meeting, but Davis and Brian and I spent, uh, an hour or so, about a week and a half, two weeks ago, walking around this property and just trying to get a feel for what our needs are gonna be long-term and something would change with the city's decision on the facility, what we thought we would do, and it will be communicated more after soon. Um, we had some folks here this week trying to get an idea of some costs, so, um, we'll be in touch soon on that. And then, uh, we're gonna talk a little bit later about, uh, project combination with baseball diamond, and they don't wanna scale up under public, you guys have a item, but um, there's, if you didn't know, there was some wind damage down there with the ratio, and so, there's some talk, um, maybe some improvements down there in combination with some of the damages, it was, we'll talk about that more a little bit.
Good. I think you're the only one that can point to stats, so. Consent agenda, anything anyone wants to pull off of there? If not, we'll retain the motion to approve the consent agenda. So, motion by students to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second by Hawaska. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Action items, second reading of the social media policies, four fifteen point one, four fifteen point two, and removal of six of five point four. B.
Just to recall that, uh, we, we discussed, um, a couple board meetings ago as far as our social media presence. Uh, making sure our social media accounts, our school accounts, um, the, the, the policy is reflective of the Iowa School Board Association's policy. Um, this is what we want to adopt, and as far as impacting it, uh, we're already in the process of identifying all the social media accounts, whether it's Instagram, um, Facebook, Twitter, that use our symbol or our name, uh, and taking back possession of those, um, just so that we can ensure that they stay within the boundaries of board policy. Um, Casey has a Google Doc out, and, um, coaches and sponsors and directors are, um, listing what accounts that they have that utilize the Solin name or logo, and, um, um, so that we can wrap our arms around those and better identify those on our website as more official school accounts.
And we would, so like if a coach moves on or retires or whatever, that account will stay with cost, right?
Correct, so what, um, we have an existing account right now, I think it's Solin, uh, GBB, Axol and GBB, girls' basketball program. Um, Jamie created that account, uh, it does, it uses Solin, it uses our logo, it represents the girls' basketball team, so Jamie put that on the Google Doc, gave us ownership rights and the password. Jamie will still do all the tweeting and, and follow the guidelines, but if Jamie ever decided to move on, we would then just maintain that account, correct?
Yeah, I think, you know, as we went through this, I think, again, just to clarify where this process started off, was this, you know, we were at ISB a year, year and a half ago, and they started talking about best practices in social media, they just talked about the fact that how much social media has changed over, you know, preceding decade. And it was just this wild west, and they said, you know, it's best to have control of these things, and that way you have consistency, so that we, when you do have people move on, that they know where to go, so if you've got a Facebook page and you've got a middle school Facebook page, and it was put together by the middle school principal, you don't want that to disappear when the middle school principal retires. You know, you wanna be able to keep that, Mike's never allowed to retire, but we just, we'll cover that later. Uh, we, those are some of the examples, you know, that they have, districts where, you know, they've got this great resource, and then the person who managed it moves on and all of a sudden, everybody's following it, and it's not being updated anymore, and so, um, this allows us to better control that and make sure we've got a consistent, uh, process over time, so.
Well, you could protect the coaches, teachers, I mean, live on the road, you know.
I'll enter to the motion, motion by Hawaska to approve the second reading. Second by Jevica, any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Uh, first reading of board policy one oh eight, discrimination and harassment based on sex prohibited. Chris, this is, this came from you.
Title line policy.
Yep.
And this came from, um, a recent, um, conference, uh, a learning conference that we attended, uh, through the Iowa School Board Association. Um, this is a, a, a policy that, uh, they talked a lot about at that conference, that we want to make sure that it's in our board policy.
And we're to reference it on our website, and we're to, to link the board policy and show we're two clicks away, and we've got that as soon as that's next on. And then, uh, Davis has been identified as the title line coordinator, and he has policies and procedures that he would follow if we would have a situation like that.
And so.
Which is not in our policies, because it's a procedure.
Just a quick question on that, because, so, best, I'm just trying to think about best practice about the title line coordinator role, and in some cases, uh, you know, one of the ones that went through ISB, they talked about trying to avoid having the superintendent be the initial person, because then there's no place to appeal other than to the board. And I don't, and that was on, uh, EOD sort of stuff on the, on the HR side, they just talked about, you, you wanna have that lower level, so I don't know if we thought about that from the administrative side. I know it doesn't affect the policy as, that we're approving, but I guess that's, that will be the question I have is.
I'd like to, what?
Who are the user?
Like, uh, probably an administrator, probably a principal.
Yep.
Uh, and we can certainly talk about that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I don't know how much it matters how likely these complaints are, but, you know, there's, there's always gotta be that, that first layer of appeal, and if it, if, if you start at the top, then there's only one place to appeal, and that's the board.
If not, yeah.
Well, my thoughts on it too, as a female, if I have, I would prefer to have a female to go to if I had sexual harassment. So going to someone that is a man, and you've been sexually harassed by a man, then you just feel a lot more uncomfortable. So it can go either way, is there a way to have two separate people, like a male and a female?
I know, I know on the EOD side of things, they're, what I think it references, you can have a primary and a secondary, so you could, if you go to either, so I, I, it's a, it's a good question. Yeah, it's, it's a very good question, because I know they, again, that was from the HR conference from ISB that they talked about, it's primary and secondary, then you just.
Okay.
This is just first reading, so we can always discuss. Uh, I think we're listed on it, people on policy, it's actually listed on the policy.
It's a Davis side of super.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. We can discuss that and bring it back for a second reading, yep.
I think that'll be the, it's just a little perforating, one only, one only. Motion by Jevica, fifth reading, second by Hawaska, any further discussion? So we're directing them to review that.
Yep.
Or organizational process or administrative, keeping it away, maybe preview for the appeal process.
Yep. Looks good.
And then the policy committee report after revised, yes.
Okay.
Okay, um, you know, any other discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries with the directions, the policy committee to revamp that based on administrative input. SPRC request LEP allowable costs. You wanna bring that one up there, I think this was not the source of magic words again.
We just have to make sure to speak the amount.
Okay, so, scroll down, this may, this may not be the magic words, one.
No.
Okay. So LEP, we gotta remind you, Davis, is.
It's the ELL.
Okay. Okay, so this is, so we're asking for ten thousand. So any motion to?
We get very, very little funding, because we, we just don't have any language learners. Um, but, um, we do, I believe we had two last year. We had a part-time associate that would take, we had a full-time associate that used part of her time to transport the student to Mount Vernon for direct instruction from an ELL instructor. And then carry out some of those lessons that were designed by the ELL instructor. And so our expenses went over on that and that would.
And again, this is not money that, it's just the needed.
Yes.
So we just always like to clarify the symptoms. We're just getting spending the authority back from what we've done.
Yeah. Now with that, I will say this year Jessica did hire a, a reading teacher that has, that's also endorsed ELL. And she is able now, we are able to, with her endorsement, to provide that direct instruction. So we don't have to, we're not doing any transporting this year. Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve SBRC request LEP allowable cost of ten thousand thirty-one dollars and eighty-two cents.
Motion by Alaska, second by Wolf. Any discussion? All's in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Posed. Motion carries unanimously. Next up is specialized deficit allowable growth. If you think we just did this one, you're right. The state changed something on the form and the number comes out differently, so we've got to redo it to make the number that we're requesting. That's the number that we submitted.
Which is actually less.
Which is actually less. So again, this is one of those struggles is there, is there work on their, their stuff while we're, while we're submitting stuff that we thought we had the right number and the submitted number actually winds up being different, so.
I think I made the motion last time.
Yep.
Again, so my motion to approve the specialized deficit allowable growth request in the amount of two hundred and eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seven cents.
Motion by Jemica, second by Coons. Any discussion?
I, I will say this, we've done a great job. At one time, this number was pushing six hundred thousand. We've done a great job. We still go over, this is, you know, we get federal funding for additional specialized design instruction for students with disabilities, whether it's learning or physical or whatever. We do a good job here too as far as making sure that our rosters, the, the number of kids per special education teacher, the, the ratio's very low. You know, again, one of our, our goals in our strategic plan is to try to obtain a 1.5 years growth so we can close that gap and. But cost.
I think our councils and our principals have done a good job trying to help with scheduling to optimize these things. I think over the years, that's, that's helped in terms of fostering those kids so that they can get the right amount of attention and maximize that efficiencies. And again, this is a reminder that this is not money. It's just spending authority. So, and any other discussion? With that, hearing none. All's in favor, signify by saying aye. 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 Posed. Motion carries unanimously. Next up is informational items, financial indicators. It's that kind of year again. And Davis, I don't know if you want those to pull off?
Look who's waiting. There she is. I've gotten ready to pull up.
It's our, it's our favorite.
If you want to, I'll pull them up if you want to walk the board through and answer any questions you can start with.
She's coming up for her efficiency.
Pat, I've got it on the wall if you want to.
Oh, awesome. Okay, yeah, I see the indicators. It's the time of year we kind of look at what we did last year, where we're at now and see where we're going. Three that we actually always look at are the percent of revenue spent. So if you, if the district taken a dollar, you spent a dollar five, you spent a dollar, you spent fifty cents, where are you at? So you can kind of see, if you look at that and think, someone not knowing that if you're coming in and seeing in two thousand and fifteen, a hundred and four point eight percent. First thing you think is, what are they doing? You as a board member all know, our solvency ratio was that, our balance was that, we are very high. How to suffer by the board to overspend to bring those rates down. What I think is really cool about all this is you can see over time exactly what has happened. And then when we get to solvency, you can see the effect on that. It's really cool to see that everything that you guys put into play actually comes where you want it to come. So last year, ninety-seven point nine eight percent of revenue spent. Now you might say, you remember last year what happened, pandemic. That's all I can say. A lot of these ratios, COVID is accurate as well as jurisdictions funding is accurate too. I did not put it on the slide here, but as of like a minute ago, when I was working on this, I'm at ninety-eight point six six, fourth current case rate of twenty-one, so still on target. Mind if something else happens, that could change all of this in a lot of ways. So that's where that comes up.
Pat, remind me from last year, we were right around estimating a hundred, just a touch over a hundred percent when we, when we thought we were going to be last year.
I keep in mind the thing that's helping you this year is we did larger cash reserve this year. We bought the debt service down so we got to fund more of the cash reserves ready. It just definitely helping you down on that this year. Second one, salary benefits ratio.
So am I, are we all? Which one do you want?
Sorry, that one's going to be solvency too. That's fine if you have enough such that you define. Solvency ratio takes at one point in time, actually on six thirty, of your assignment unassigned money, so nothing of capital. And of that, what does that represent? One is that a range of ten to fifteen percent. And for a couple of years now, we've actually had it. We can see clear back in two thousand and fifteen, twenty-one percent. That's where we had discussions though. We need to lower that. We're not a bank, so this would, so this would need to lower that. So you can see where we're at now. Now you might say that thirteen point two six, that's a give up. What are you doing? COVID and there was some people, actually could have done a little bit higher. Think it affects the board members potentially. There was some expenditures that left on the capital supply. And we thought about reading all, but it worked with Davis a lot and it's like, you should do a higher fluctuation. That's where we ended up last year.
I think our projection for last year was eight percent.
We were more like right underneath that zone, so you can see kind of what that did.
Yeah. Because I think we thought you were going under the type of range. Like back up next year for this.
We're kind of in that little range right now, but I mean, really realistically looking at this, things were really different decisions you guys have made have really shown up. That's why, yeah, we go, sorry, that because of that dollar you have, you spend eighty seven percent of personnel, seventy four you got. Boards set the range of seventy-five to eighty, can see kind of where we were at, eighty-one five kind of came down a little bit. You might think, okay, we're kind of high, so you know what happened. If you remember, there's been a transition in staff. Sometimes as far as when staff, I mean, they've been more tenured and then ones who hired have that, maybe like aptur's degree or bachelors as well. Differential salaries in there. And then also keep in mind during all of this, we've had new middle school open, not much change in personnel, but added fourteen to ten percent. So that kind of fluctuates your dollars as well. But right now, I have got, which is not a one there, for this year, about seventy-nine point eight percent. Again, that's about, that's about five minutes ago. So that can change as well as far as if you have external costs outside of salary benefits. Larger path to work with a smaller number of seniority ratio.
And just a reminder, these recommended numbers come from Iowa School Board Association.
And then as we look at, as we look at that, that also is affected by the fact that for the last couple months of the year, we have fewer expenses. We weren't running buses. We weren't doing other things. So that'll get a lot of the general funds, so that's gonna, it plays that number.
Yep, absolutely. This one, David, I'm going to, this rate, as you can see during this, where our financial solvency has been, where all the ratios have been. And over the last three years, plus the current year, you have to protect your profit tax rate. You can see and you can demonstrate that it is a doable thing to do. Now, we know going into this next year that we're going to have some obstacles potentially without the debt service now. Lower rates, so we can do the cash reserve button, so it's going to be worse sort of when it ends up or evaluations coming in as far as. Thought that would be a great sign to kind of figure in where we've been.
When do we actually have to certify our?
It's.
It's our, so now it's just the state go through and.
Two hundred and, yeah.
Was it eighteen point?
Six, eighteen point six, I think.
And last year we were down one or two, weren't we?
We were down one last year.
We never really anticipated that.
And we was talking to Grant Wood AA suits today and a few of them were inquiring as far as what others up or down because there are some districts that are wondering, it took big hits this year.
I was, I was on the.
As far as negative.
I was on the justice call with, webinar with Pat earlier in the week, had a little lunch the one day. And one of the four questions they had asked was about where you, where you at relative to how you're going to be. And it was very skewed to people be having, many people, two to five percent fewer students in their building on account day than what they had expected to happen, so.
I'll, yeah, I'll just say about naming districts. One district told me that they're down seventy-seven, another district's down a hundred and twenty-some, another district, eighty, down eighty.
There's a way to plan for that.
These are three, eight, four, eight schools and, and asking, one of them that's down over a hundred said kindergarten, parents didn't send the kindergarten kids this year. Preschool kindergarten just took a, took a nosedive. This school happened to be in a hybrid and I think a lot of parents just said it's not worth it. I'm going to wait, send it next year when maybe things are more normal.
Yeah, that's about thirty thousand dollars to us.
Yeah, so then just where that SSA ends up.
Yeah, that's a, that was, that was, that was a consensus a long way. Lower elementary levels. One of the things that they talked about is that it's not just in Iowa. They were talking about the fact that across the, across the country, that they're talking about where are the missing kids this year as schools have gone back. You know, Iowa at least has, once their role, there's a trapping number of detached students everywhere in Iowa schools and I don't remember what they called it. But even in Iowa with that, they're missing. So I think a lot of them are homeschool and not, not registering with homeschool assistance program. That they're just homeschooling on their own this year because, you know, with that, if you're with homeschool assistance program, you would show up in that homeschool district as a homeschool student, but they just, they're just students that are missing this year. Tim, remind me, would this district then get money? So if you run a homeschool assistance program, there is money that comes to you to help those families.
It's, it's about thirty percent, about point three three is what you get. You know, you get a little bit more if they duel enroll like in just some activities, band, vocal, stores, things like that.
The challenge for district is there's, there's considerable investment in terms of doing that. And so I think there's a couple of districts around us that do it, but they tend to take everyone to like the geographic area because you don't have enough people waiting. You can't really afford to pay for the materials and the staff to do it, so. So yeah, I think that's a, I know we've got a couple of kids who I recall that are at homeschooling this year that, that weren't in previous years, but even with that, we're still up, so.
I felt bad hitting the button because we were simply up in a real poor sound. I'll take it.
Well, I hit the button that said the same. Because no one would tell me what we were, because Chris, Chris, Chris told me I had to wait for the official.
Which, yeah, because we sort of had it one mistake. Anybody have any questions about any of that?
I think the numbers were really good.
I think it's just maybe this year, how to keep those in mind and just move forward as well.
I think that'll be, that'll be the big challenge this year is we've had, with the online learning, there's a big expenditure in terms of, in terms of money coming out of, because most of that's going to be on ISL, so we just have to, we have to manage these currently this year to keep our numbers where they, where they need to be. So we'll have a lot more expenditures coming out than our non-personnel.
What is that number officially? High school level is not so bad. It's the, right?
The minimum number, I don't remember what that is off the top of my head. It's something twenty. Yeah, maybe more than that. And then. So it's, it's a good question. I think Davis, your number, was that number, was it up? Pat's trying to.
For which, why?
It was bigger at first, but it was something that kind of came back to the district.
The, the number enrolled in it?
No.
Oh, the cost of it?
Well, cost of the end of year number right now.
I thought it was about twenty-eight hundred a chair.
Yep.
Twenty-eight hundred a chair and I think we're right around seventy-eight, I believe, seventy-eight students, twenty-eight hundred a chair. And, and the reason why that's a little more expensive than other programs, it's, it's a live teacher.
Right.
Yeah.
Josh Matur. Thanks, Pat. Okay. Thanks, Pat, for coming to this. Well, it's that kind of year. Fortunately, they're coming up. They'll get assigned. This is the last one for the committee and then I'll get re-assigned in November, so. This is up for your, for your reminder what you were assigned to and we'll have to figure this out next month. There we go. So, and then Davis, I'm assuming you're working on the ones for.
He did.
Yep.
The other ones are already, already done, so. Those will all get approved next, next month, so.
We're supposed to stay on the, you don't want me on?
Yeah, that.
Don't do that. You can get them anyway.
I'll tell you how that works, you know. I, I once heard that the Dixie one, but I said, I'll be on any day except for, and that was the one I got on. And everyone else said they didn't want to be on that one as well, so you lost. It was negotiations. So.
I said that as one of the policies again.
You've only been on it two years in a row.
Someone volunteered, I won't say.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so we'll shuffle those around. That's just a reminder, we're going to have to reorganize next month. So it'll be our annual meeting. We'll have the formal election of the board president and vice president for the upcoming year. And we'll go through that. We learned during one of our trainings that actually Chris is in charge of that meeting until we elect the board president, so. She'll get the gavel to start the meeting and get the, get to do fun and exciting things.
I think I emailed everybody the convention. To find out if you guys can do it.
And it's virtual this year, so.
Yep.
There, there, what was Employment Relations Conference in October was virtual. And I thought it really worked out well.
Yeah. If you, if you signed up for it, then at the end, they actually sent you the link and they had taped it all, so if you hadn't missed anything, which was kind of nice. So I'm hoping we can get everybody signed up and they may.
And just a reminder, this year, it looks like it's all in the evenings. Oh, that would be cool. So, so I think it's the tenth of the seventeenth of the primary things, tenth, seventeenth and eighteenth of the dates. They tend to, tend to, I think, some of the pre-conference workshops that we've normally been on the same day as the Assembly. The seventeenth is the delegate assembly. We will have to pick a delegate. It's in the evening this time. I've done it for the last number of years. It's relatively painless. But you're basically going and vote on the priorities for the, for the ISB itself. If we can have a delegate and an alternate to go, the delegate will get to vote and the alternate will just get to observe.
What nights are those?
November tenth, it looks like it's an equity.
Yeah, what, what day of the week is what he's wondering?
November tenth and then seventeenth and then our board meeting is the nineteenth.
Wednesday, Sunday.
Tuesday, Wednesday.
So. So just, just maybe you don't get your, your, your nights for, your three straight nights that way.
Who hasn't been a delegate? I've done that.
You have done, I know, I think you did it the one year I couldn't do it. I have done it. I'm more than happy to do it, but I'm also more than happy to let somebody else do it. Somebody suggested.
Because I already have a chance, I will be more than happy to let somebody else.
Chris suggested, Chris suggested somebody, but I won't tell you who she threw under the bus.
I can do it.
So. So Adam is volunteering for that. If anybody wants to be the alternate, all you have to do is sit and listen. It's a good experience.
I'll be the alternate.
Okay, so Jamie will be our alternate, so. It'll be our virtual, let's see how that goes. I, it's, it's never been the same since they went to the clickers because it was always interesting when you, when people had them. You open, you hold these color-coded cards that tell you what the numbers were. And you'd see all these cards associated with the big districts go up. And then you'd see all these cards from the small districts go up. And, you know, it's like, okay, are there enough small districts that are voting a particular way to outvote the big districts who have a lot more votes? Okay. Next up on informational items is it's also that time of year where we will meet with our legislators. And so I was talking with Chris, I think what we're looking at doing as the boards of the table is to invite our senators. our, our senators, Zach Walls, see if he wants to join us on the nineteenth of November, and then whoever is the winner of the house race, we would invite them for our December board meetings. So.
If they're available, yeah.
That's what we traditionally do.
Or if you separate January, yeah.
Yeah, they don't generally like January because of the fact that they're gonna be back to the state hospital.
Sure, fair enough.
The thoughts, concerns, I think it's always nice to have them and get to bend their ear for a little bit.
Yep.
The next up is, Rick will remember this, we used to do a work session with the city council. And we, we stopped doing it because we moved, because we moved out of the high school library and we didn't have a great spot to do it for a year, and we said, well, there's nothing major to talk about this year, and we haven't had another one since then. I'm talking with the mayor, it seems like there's a desire to do that, I guess, could have a conversation. You need to, if, if we're minimal that, we have to come out of time, you know, we could do it, if we start, they've done it before our, one of the school board meetings, if that worked with the city. That's what we've generally done, but I'm not sure if that's gonna work, and so we'll have to, we'll have to work through details on that. So I will be in touch with you once I get some idea from them on what might work, about what dates we would.
Maybe December, because November's pretty good.
I think December's probably. So, yeah, work could be in January, yeah. Speaking of that, I don't know what's on here, Davis and Chris will probably be looking for more dates for our mid-year workshop at the admin team this year. We did that last year on January morning, so we're not sure about whether it's gonna be virtual, maybe even have I A S B come back in.
We coincided that with the regional, I mean, the region are all online this year. Yeah, yeah, so we're kind of open up now, more dates, yeah.
And that's another thing to keep in mind, is the regional reviews will probably be in January again, but they're gonna be virtual, so. Next up on our informational items is the baseball field S R N A, Rick.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, and I wanted, I'm gonna introduce Mike in a minute, but I just thought, I don't want to differentiate his pitches, but it's always business, I'm gonna warn you, you know what's going on?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So I mentioned that the committee, that there's a possibility, probability of some improvements at the baseball diamond, and I think maybe most of you know, about a year and a half ago, there was some rumblings of a possible group of people that were looking to make some improvements at the baseball diamond, and whether that fell off or just got skipped down the road, that's okay, but about a month ago, another group of very excited parents kind of approached the district and talked about field improvements, and in combination with the wind damage, so we had some backstop fencing issues and we had some bleacher issues down there with the ratio. And so there was gonna need to be some improvements or updates made anyway, so it's kind of now a, a process that got put in place and Mike Scheich is here representing kind of the parent group and has done a great job as always in kind of being their communication arm, and then going beyond that and actually getting a plan put together, which is something that we grew a year and a half ago, really never got to that point, so this, so we're a little further down the road than what we were then. And I think we're at the point where this is gonna be coming to the board very soon, in terms of what we want to commit to regarding the project, and then if we're able to financially, what we want to do. So procedurally, what I want to tell you tonight is kind of what's gonna happen over the next couple of weeks, and, and that's gonna be probably Dan and Davis and myself and Pat getting together possibly as early as next week to kind of look at some numbers financially as to some of the projects that are earmarked facilities-wise, where the cash sets, where some spending opportunities are, and then if, in fact, you could even talk to this group about helping them financially. Mike already met with, with Davis and Dan and I about three weeks ago and is ready now to, to get going, and they really are excited about trying to get some of this stuff started before the weather changes, and that's why we're gonna kind of push this a little bit for you guys in terms of possibly, I mentioned a special meeting, if we get to the point where we're ready to do something commitment-wise, probably have to have a special meeting because we don't want to wait until the latter part of November to tell them where we are. Remember that the baseball diamond is at the Solon Nature Recreation Area, is part of the twenty-eighty agreement because the city owns that property. So last week I met with Steve Duncan, who represents their twenty-eighty board, and we talked through the plan, the process, and he is fully committed that this will not be an issue from the city's standpoint, they're gonna have no trouble letting this group indirectly through us make the improvements down there that, that are presented to them. And financially, this is not impactful to them, so that helps, right, they're not asking them to run. And so we've kind of already cleared that hurdle, obviously the plan itself has to go before the council, just like it has to come back to us. And so we'll be presenting that probably again sometime shortly, I'm gonna turn it over to Mike and let him just kind of at a very high level tonight, give you an idea on kind of what they're thinking, talk a little bit about some potential in-kind, some potential fundraising, and their commitment to this project. Is that fair, Mike?
Sure.
Okay, there you go.
You better. Good. Mike Scheich, for you guys that don't know me, really appreciate this time to just visit with you, and I'm gonna get quick, but I gotta tell you, I, I've sat through these meetings, right? This, this is really good. As a parent, I can't tell you, I, I, I wanna be in Solon, that was before even tonight, I mean, I love being in Solon. It worked a great spot with that innovation, with that learning, this is good stuff, guys, and I, I commend all you guys and the educators. Great, great stuff, exciting, so baseball, alright, so, we'll move ahead real quick, so we've got a lot of excited parents, we saw the duration of damage, we saw some damage, we thought, okay, gosh, you're gonna get a little bit of mine, not a lot, but you're gonna get a little bit of insurance money, let's, let's rather than just repair, patch and paint, maybe we can make this thing a lot better, so we, we dove into, into some kind of brainstorming session of what we could do, what we could, what we could afford, and what we thought we could bite off for the next season, so we put together a little, a little information packet, which we're not gonna go into a lot of detail tonight. I'll give you the ten thousand foot view, is you've got a lot of structure down there that is in need of repair even prior to duration, okay, the dugouts are, are in some issues, the netting is some issues, backdrop, et cetera. So what, what really our goal was two things, one, to improve the safety for the, the players, right, those open dugouts, I, I've got kids that play baseball. Every time I go to those games, I'm like, oh my gosh, you know, and one kid turns around, he's not watching the pitch, it scares me, guys. Those open dugouts are just thinking not safe, okay, so one idea of ours is to make those safer, improve them, make them last a little longer rather than just treated wood, we're gonna look some brick and mortar stuff. The other, the other goal, other than pure safety for the players, is fan experience. Again, as a parent, I'm a, a little biased, but I go to those, take a lot of the games, and the fan experience is a challenge. One, to see through the, through the chain link, and two, with the dugouts tall, very difficult to watch a baseball game. The other part of that fan experience is a lot of the games, there's, there's S R N A stuff going on with the home kids over here, right next to it. Lot of danger there, back step drops are not real high, a lot of foul balls, and every time the foul ball goes out, I kind of cringe because there's kids running around. If, if parents run around, they're not watching our game, so we're really, we're really trying to make this a better fan experience and a safer player experience. We've got a really good group, we got parents that are excited, they're willing to do, to drive some in-kind donations, they're willing to donate their own time. We're, we're already communicating to some folks to see if we could get some commitment for some in-kind work. We think we have some great ideas to fundraise a portion of this, but we can't fundraise the whole project, right, we can't, we're not quite that good. But we think we can do a portion of it, so that's where we come to you guys, is hey, can you help fund that? We've gotta think, you, we're gonna spend some money upgrading these dugouts at some point, we're willing to take that and maybe parlay any money that the school board can provide, I think we can parlay that into, we can, we can extend that money, okay, I'm sure of that. Again, we got a great group, we've got some committees already committed, again, nothing's in stone, because really, nothing's gonna happen unless we get some money. But if we can get some money from you guys and pull the trigger, I, I'm really excited about what we can get done. And I know in more specifics maybe at a later time, but that's the two problems, but if anybody's got any questions, I'd love to answer them. If you wanna reach out to me after the words, a lot of you guys know me, holler at me, if you have any answer, any questions you have. And I'm, I'm really excited about what we can get back from you, you folks, and some feedback from you guys and gals, and, and see if we can move forward.
Thanks, Mike.
Fair enough.
Yeah, it's perfect, great, you know, the, the timing is probably just totally because of the damage, right? I mean, it just triggered the opportunity. Davis and I visited this morning and, you know, we, we are really known far and wide for our facilities, whether that's educationally, buildings that we have, the facilities we have, and this, this thing is, is showing its age in addition to the damage that we've done, there's some things down there that need upgrading. So if we can take advantage of a combination of some parental support, in-kind work, some more money applied by the board, and I think it's a worthy cause and a great opportunity timing-wise to make this happen, so.
Thank you, just a couple links and note on there, so. I was shocked that the dugouts didn't go down during the wind, during the, I, I drove by there, I was expecting them to be down, because I walked, I walked out, walked out, walked out for a baseball game, and I'm like, there are posts that are rotted through and not connected to the ground, so how that stood up, I have no idea, and so I was shocked with that. And then obviously, you know, we've talked about trying to figure out something on the safety side, because the, the open dugouts are challenged while they were, while they were enraged when the stadium went up, the safety standards have changed since then, and, you know, we need to, you know, it's, it's been on our radar, and, you know, I know we had talked about maybe trying to do something last spring, in terms of doing something with that before baseball season started, but that got interrupted by COVID and by the time we got back to the other baseball season was over, so. I do think, you know, from a liability standpoint and a, a player safety standpoint, that is something that, that's been on the board's radar, that has to get addressed, and so I think we were gonna have some money to just find out, hope to replace the dugouts and, you know, the safety issues of the dugouts. And so I think it's important to think about, you know, what that amount was gonna be, and that was money that we knew was gonna have to come out at some point in time. Wind was always up in the air, but it was something that, that was on our radar in terms of stuff that had to get done from a building-to-ground standpoint, so.
And, and I talked to Ryan this afternoon, and he thinks by, probably tomorrow or Monday for sure, they'll be able to separate out the damage at the ball field versus some of the other wind damage that the insurance claim will be for everything. So then we'll, we'll be able to say, this is what the fence damage was, this is bleacher damage as opposed to the middle school roof, you know, so we'll, we'll know that number by next week, Dan, and then we'll sit down, and I guess the best thing to do probably is just let Davis then inform everybody kind of where we are and where we're at, then there's a reason to bring, we'll schedule a meeting and go with that, right?
Yeah.
So we'll try to get it rehearsed in the afternoon, maybe right before Mike, because we're a little ready for that.
I'd just say it's, it's, it's new for improvement and having kids that go watching games and then running around down there, you're right, safety, no stop walls, and even the guys in the dugout, it's, I think it's just a matter of time, so we're gonna make these improvements.
It's, it's, it's just, I went down to, I went down to Arizona, again, it's crazy, but, and just, even at, even at the pro park, you know, we've been to some of them, and, you know, you go down there and they had extended, you know, the, the netting all the way down the third base, the person's third base lines, which, which hadn't been the case the other four, so. The expectations are, are changing in terms of, in terms of safety, and I think it's, it's something we've gotta be aware of, because as, as societal expectations change in terms of what's, what's this, what's a, what's an acceptable risk, that changes what risk we can allow, and so like it or not, you know, liability standpoint, when society changes, what's acceptable, they'll come back, if somebody gets hurt, they're gonna say, well, everybody knew this was a risk, why didn't you make an adjustment, so I think that's something we've gotta consider in the layout of the stadium. So.
So, I mean, I, I would hope on in the next week, what will be, probably give an email.
Sounds good.
With their, you know, just thinking about from an insurance standpoint, with their, because I, I know that's compared in terms of liability, with there being insurance savings from safety improvements down there or not, or would it be, would it just be so small in relation to everything else?
At the beginning of the funds that we use for, for safety, have there been flexible on that, as far as funding some of this?
Three hundred dollars in a different area to use, or?
No, the, we were, we, we tagged some general fund money shifted to, well, we were able to use some general fund money on safety when it came to helmets, that I don't know about actual physical structure.
It's from physical structure, with the general fund anyways.
Yeah.
Well, I think, obviously, I think the funds you're looking at are general fund, P E P O L and the statewide penny, those are the ones you could, you could make use for it. That's, I think, you know, obviously those are, the good news is, again, going back, I was gonna ask Pat about the flex units here, but surprisingly, the sales tax revenue is up year-over-year. I mostly said assuming it was gonna be down, although the state's general fund money is down relative to last year by a ten little percent. The statewide penny money is up three percent over last year, I think everybody learned from Amazon and every place online during the, during the, during the pandemic has, has helped out with that, with that, right, though, we'd be down in that day as well, and, so I think our, our statewide penny money will be in decent shape, this will be forward, so. Board learning, does anyone need a break before we go to board learning, or we just could just crawl straight in? Okay.
It's the third of Sir Ken.
So this, this is, our official business is over, you are welcome to stay as long as you want, but we are, we are gonna go into board learning and, and learn things together. I think this is the last in the three-part series on Sir Ken Robinson.
Yeah, we're already working hard next door down.
And those of you who participated in that, that workshop, we already got fifteen points on the first day of, of the year.
I A S B thanks Sir Ken Robinson for his collaboration in developing this board discussion exercise. This is Luann Gavist and I'm on the board development team at I A S B. This at-the-board-table discussion exercise includes a video clip from a recent interview with Sir Ken, along with a quote from his book Creative Schools, followed by some essential questions for your board team to discuss at your board table. And now, let's start with a quote from the book Creative Schools. Sir Ken believes it is vital that the boards set the tone for innovation by helping to transform the school culture. He says, "There are some things that we want all students to know, understand, and be able to do as a result of their education, but they also have their own unique patterns of aptitudes, interests, and dispositions. Education must attend to those too. Making education personal has implications for the curriculum, for teaching, and for assessment. It involves a transformation in the culture of schools."
So, the role of leadership in setting up expectations is very important, and if the school board gives out messages about the need for balanced curriculum, if they support that with positive approaches to assessment, if they give out the message that they, that teachers are valued, if that's backed up with support for professional development, that's a very important part of their role. It's, I've often said this, and I think it's very important, it's a key theme in the book, that the real role of leadership, that we want creativity and innovation and flexibility and adaptability, and it's usually where people flourish, which is what we do want in schools, that the real role of leadership is not commanding control, it's climate control. And school boards have a vital role in setting the climate of achievement in the district.
So maybe one final question that we can pose for board superintendent teams is, how are they, going back to your words, letting it about what's okay and what is possible, having conversation about what classrooms could look like, what the innovation could look like in the school, in the classrooms, and when teachers do take.
And when teachers do take a risk, support that. So the last question then would be, how are our board teams supporting a culture of innovation?
Yeah, it's a very good question. I wish I'd said that myself.
I think you did. I think I just repeated it for you. Well, Sir Ken, thank you for your time for helping our board members, our superintendents, really think about how they can continue to make a tremendous impact on the lives of students. And we so look forward to seeing you on November twenty first here in Des Moines at our IASB convention. Thank you so much.
Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Now let's explore your board team's commitment to transforming your school's culture to one where people are innovative, creative and flourish. By discussing some essential questions. Sir Ken defines culture as the way we do business around here. He says it's about what's okay and about what's possible. In what specific ways is your board helping to develop a culture of innovation across your system?
Dan.
Well, I think, you know, we're, we're allowing groups of our teachers and administrators to go to look through the survey. And Steve Blumberg and Caitlin.
Caitlin Tucker. Caitlin Tucker.
Coming in straight from the teachers and, you know, allowing them to see these different ways of doing things. Is a great start of the innovation process for the district.
Well, you missed tonight. You need the blended learning stuff. That was really good tonight.
I'm living it all.
And Dan, you can watch it online tomorrow. You talked for some time about that whole personalized learning. And I know when Josh talked about the blended learning last time, you had asked about, hey, it'd be good to sometimes see that operationalized. The, the eighth grade math teachers basically came in tonight and really this is how it works. Really laid it out and it really, you could see the personalized learning that was taking place in the more one-to-one and small groups and the pace was, was something these kids are experiencing now.
But I, I think is equally as important to them to do this is that they feel free to try. You know, and you want to do a good job. Because that's, that's going to be scary too. You should kind of stepping outside, like there's mainstream and this is a new thing and, you know, obviously the whole school can't, you're learning, learning wise. And just being, being supported in that, kind of taking that avenue out and, and you know, taking educated risks. And just the support from the district on that and just the administration to kind of see how that goes.
I think our reputation is that we kind of are innovative and stuff. I mean, I do IAS, IASB stuff and, you know, just knowing other board members and administration throughout the state, I mean, they really do look so as, kind of having that, I mean, that's one of the reasons we moved here. I had tons of people, if you're moving to Eastern Iowa, you've got to take a look at someone first. They're way ahead of the game on a lot of stuff because they are pushing, so.
Well, I think we have managed to be a smaller district so we can turn quicker.
It'd be close to Eastern Iowa, get a university and stuff around here, just a lot of the things.
And we've committed to building capacity within our teachers and, and building our own experts to lead. You know, like we, we chose the math department to start pioneering this. Learn it, lead it, and then it'll filter out. We've got four teachers that are participating in a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday conference, professional development through teacher college. To learn more about dyslexia so that we can, you know, better support that learning profile.
So this brings up a question. I wondered, how did, why did we start with math? That would seem like, from my standpoint, you know, just not giving an education. That would seem like a tougher one to handle.
We, we had a great start with literacy and the, the, I think the curriculum, the, the approach that we take with literacy is, is more personalized. Math, we, we know some kids, you know, really take off accelerating math, others need that additional support. Math traditionally was a stand in front of the classroom, work through problems, whole class. And we thought, you know, we need to do something now for math. We've got the right teachers who can pull this off, can pioneer this stuff. And so we, we chose math for the reason that they were behind where literacy was as far as that personalized learning. And it just, it was a small enough group, a six, twelve math department, that we could provide more supports for a small enough group to pioneer this. So that's kind of why we.
Yeah, I think it's, it's great to be able to do that now.
The other part that I think is, for years, our focus on with math had been advanced learning. What are we doing for those kids that really get it? Other than accelerating on what, what do we do? And this just became the natural, or not only can we help these kids, but we can help these kids as well.
Well, it's just kind of off about a week, which, you know, you gotta kind of tim it down a little bit, but that makes a lot of sense. So those kids want to keep going.
I know, I know the focus here is, is a well-rounded culture across the board from the student to the teacher. But I just want to ask the principal really quick, I mean, a year and a half ago, we were in not a very good way culturally. Like we were, they weren't happy with the board at all because of some of the decisions that we had to make. So it's not, it's not good because of what has transpired since then with COVID and everything in terms of normal here. But what, what is, what is your sense now in the, in the hallway, it's with your staff about the district? I don't expect them to ever like us, but is there a level of respect for what we're trying to do for them? Is that a fair question to ask you? Without putting you on the spot, but I mean, I just, I guess I want to engage you on a little bit.
Yeah, I think it totally depends on the teacher. Again, you know, speaking whole group wise, you know, from, from what I've gathered coming into the high school last year and a half. There was a lot of trust or whatever that was broken because of like whatever they felt like there was lacking, right? So it takes an incredible amount of time to build back up. And I think a lot, a lot of it has to do too with just our leadership in the building where it's me or our leadership team. And how we communicate with our colleagues that we go in day in, day out about the board and about the support from the district. To make sure that we're, we're positive. And if this seems to need to be addressed, we address them. But I think that's a big part of it, so. There's always going to be people that don't feel the way that you think that they feel or should feel. They don't know what we think we're doing or not doing. But I would say it's a better spot, yes.
I would, I would agree. And I think the COVID piece has been a perfect storm to help distract from everything else. Because now I think the teachers feel their primary deal is just overwhelmed of things that are so far out of their control. That those other things that used to bother them don't and I think won't. And changing people changes the culture, I think.
Pause the video and discuss this question now.
Davis always stops before I tell it.
How is your board helping to make learning personal for students? What impact does this mean for a balanced curriculum? How is your board communicating the need for positive approaches to assessment? Pause the video and discuss these questions now.
He waited this time. Yeah, I think we spent a lot of time talking about individualized education, right? That's a, it's an important topic from the board's perspective. Josh and our administrative team are doing to reinforce this app.
I think it's flawless. Five sizes where you can do that too, right there.
Well, I just think we're always seeking new ways to reach every kid. You know, using pop and stuff and other things. And each, hit each kid where they are. You know, I know personally, Charles and Davis is, you know, I want that safety in math, I want that safety in science, I want that safety, I want, I want to try to reach every kid that classroom where they are and move forward. We always pop up that pretty big. So from a board learning standpoint, I'll throw this out here because I registered for it. We got an email today to our board email accounts from the National School Association. There's a complimentary webinar on October twenty seventh over lunch on public school transformation now. Access Equity and Innovation for Each Child. So if you're interested in your free that day over lunch, that's a, that's what to sign up for. It's if it sounds interesting, because it talks about a lot of these topics, such as how do we, how we meet the needs of each child? And how do we design a system that does that? And I think as far as our communicating, you know, I think if, I think we do a good job, and I think we do a better job just really supporting our admin, but especially those teachers that wanted to take that risk and put in that extra time. Because there's really no, there's no financial gain for them. There's no, it's student driven. And, you know, it just letting them know that that's what this is, I mean, that's what this board wants. They want some envelope pushing and some controlled, you know, policies where we're, we're, we're trying to reach to where we want to be and we'll never be satisfied because we'll never be there, but it's our goal to be there. And so Michael Ranieri, yeah, or is that continuous process improvement, you know? How do we get better? We change our, we start meeting our annual goals. And rather than say, oh, we're good here, let's see, we just changed the goals and moved them out further. I know that can be a little bit frustrating to people when you're working towards something and, you know, the season never ends because the goal you're aspiring to, you know, just keeps moving further on, you know. You have to balance that out, which is, there's, there's an effort there that goes into continuous, continuous improvement. I think we have staff that thrive in that because they want what's best for their students as well. We're just trying to create a system that helps that. Well, maybe we need to do a better job of celebrating those goals because we kind of are that way. It's kind of this whole community working with us to be better, us to be better. And sometimes the assistant coaching me, we don't take a turn, take a deep breath and appreciate where, where we were, where we are, what we have accomplished. Because this district is, okay, what's that? You know what I mean? And even, even from something that we can communicate to the whole district, you know, it's just a thought.
Davis, you want to throw the last set of questions?
What does your board prioritize at your board meetings? Do your agendas and board discussions send clear messages about the need for innovation and creativity? What can your board celebrate and what would your board like to strengthen? Discuss these questions now by pausing the video.
I think we just, yeah, you know, things are doing. And you know what Adam said earlier about, you know, how, how we're always kind of viewed as funny heads, not afraid to try. What do you think with other, with other boards? The, the things we have in place on our agenda is different from what it's in comparison to the one a lot of people you talk to with their board meetings. I mean, you know, we kind of just overlook how celebration can achieve this because it's all that. Davis will come up with three or more of them, but that's, that's an enormous thing to celebrate every month. It's a simple thing to do. I think we've covered them, but I think.
I think to the celebration of achievements, the fact that we've refocused the administrative reports to tie in with the district goals. And then the focus on learning, folks are learning is my favorite part of the meeting, like, you know. I, I hate to say it, I like it more than board learning, but you know, it's, it is my favorite part when we get people in to talk about what's, what they're doing and what excites them in a classroom.
And the whole, and the net goes back to golden back home.
I think I'll leave it closing. Dan, thank you for this thing. Everybody, we got our five points in for the night. I do appreciate the administrative team sticking around and as we've already, always talked about, you know, when we do this board learning. Anytime you guys want to pipe in and share thoughts, you're welcome to. Other than Josh, who is not allowed to tell us something wrong when we answer these questions, that's, he's not here, so we can say that about him, but you know. Talking points. Technically, Rick, you get.
I'm going to do it first, but give you a pass. So several topics, but I obviously that would come to mind for most of us, right? With the blended learning is actually big, but I'm going to focus on the financial indicators. I just, I just think the work, the work that has went into keeping the district solvent financially. Very, very little impact on property taxes is often overlooked at the community level. But when you sit back and see all the things that we've done over the last four or five years and keeping those, you know, within those parameters and have established whether they're by school board association or internally. With those percentages, I think that's just tremendous.
Jimmy.
I, the blended learning, I, it was really good to see how that all actually works from the student's perspective. And how they're doing it and how they're problem solving and that, that I was really impressed with that. I think that's great that they're doing that.
I think for, for me, I think what I appreciate about this opportunity is to bring up Title Nine. You know, it's, it's not just a checkbox for us. You know, Tim watched something from the board, Jimmy brings her perspective. And we don't just reverse dance that. We kind of look and see, okay, in our hierarchy, you know, we gave a great, this great point about, you know, having two, a primary and a secondary and, and just, I think, I think this board, we're all different. But we all bring something to the table and I, I think it really is beneficial to our district. And just like every administrator brings something different, your team brings something different. So I'm appreciative of everybody here and just as we go through those processes. And people just don't get things on its ass. You know, we're always looking to make it better.
I wrote down a couple different things, but to cut, to get you back on the budget to eighteen, you were making that into the number, positive students in the district. I think that's huge. And, you know, people don't always realize that. I've had that conversation with people in town where they, you know, want to talk about certain things or contracts or, you know, budget stuff. I mean, to make, to make it look like you said right there where the, the numbers are great. Considering the fact of all the stuff we've had going on and being down a student or two last year. People don't realize that Pat does a great job, Davis does a great job, I think the board, you know, we, we kind of stick to our bounds because we have to. To be financially solid, but yeah, I thought that eighteen was good, especially when you hear surrounding districts and the other issues that they've got going on. So I think God, not in that situation.
Oh, let's see.
Well, I, I thought I was going to get to talk about finances. I thought you guys would all choose other things, so that's what, that's what I am prepped to talk about. I guess I'll go off the reservation again. I'm, I'm two thirds of my way through riding the bus routes. The one thing that shocks me is that on average, we have every day, one or more vehicles that run to the stop arm of our bus. I was shocked to learn that, but every day somebody blows through. I was on the bus last Friday and we're driving down the road. And there's plenty of time, car doesn't even slow down.
Something on what will be going in place this year.
And so I think, I think, you know, you know, my takeaway is, you know, the care that we have within the district, you know, our bus firms are very cautious about, about every situation. I think that, that extends across our entire staff, you know. Everybody in the building cares about the safety of our students. And, you know, if, if it's from the time we pick them up in the morning until the time we take them, take them home in the evening and the parents pick them up. And I think, you know, we just, we need a little, we'll have to figure out some ways to better support some of this. This is probably going to get filmed on the budget committee because I've only talked about looking at, at stop alarm violation cameras. But, you know, that's a, it's another, another thing that falls in a normally tight budget that we'll, we'll have to start looking at, at least maybe for some of those routes where it's more common, so. But, you know, that's a, it's another, another thing that falls in a normally tight budget that we'll have to start looking at, at least maybe for some of those routes, much more commonly, so. But, you know, and I do appreciate how much effort I think, you know, Davis and his staff, Mike, they, you know, they worked on, you know, dealing with some of the safety issues around the middle school, getting the buses out after school. And I just appreciate all of the effort that everyone puts into keeping our kids safe and making our schools a safe environment, both physically and emotionally. With that, our next regular board meeting is Thursday, the nineteenth of November. I was school association stuff will all come before then. Please let Chris know and she will get us all signed up. Also be on the alert for potential for some extra meetings, either deal with a regular board meeting or the work session with the city council. So be looking through emails for requests or availability for some of those things. With that, if there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Coons. Second, I lost, I might say hi. We are adjourned.